Money that has come into our budget is from the oil and gas taxes.
I'm sorry, if you want to address the council, you have to come to the mic, please.
Barb, you haven't recognized yet, Barb?
So.
I mean, at the end of the day, the Hudson Public Library is under the town council's umbrella. But whether we want it or not, okay, and so the town council has some budgetary responsibility, and I think is sensitive to the fact that Lock Buoy desires a library and that there's a $12 million fund balance, and that it looks very difficult for the town to justify not having conversations with Lock Buoy about a library with that type of fund balance.
I don't see where we're, you know, I realize, I see your point there, and I understand that. But 10 years ago, when we didn't have enough money to buy a copy machine, I didn't see Lock Buoy, Keansburg, or Hudson coming to us and saying, here's the money for a new copy machine. It was only through the oil and gas that we have got a balance in our checking account. If the oil and gas continues, yes, we'll still have positive cash flow. If it doesn't continue, who's going to supply the deficit in our budget, even if we have just the building in Keansburg and the building here?
Have you done the financial planning that you could share with us to show the projected revenues, that you could show to Lock Buoy the projected revenues, so we could have this conversation based on actual numbers and actual planning documents?
I'm not required to do a financial plan. I believe, under the umbrella of Hudson, Hudson has a town economic person doing the plan that you had here a couple of months ago.
Not for Lock Bu- not for the library?
No, the library wasn't involved. But you say we're underneath the umbrella of the Hudson Town. They should do the, or I would think they'd want to give us an analysis of the income and expenditures. Sorry, I'm not, I'm not an educated man.
Leonard, can I get you to step away for just a moment and let some of your other board members talk?
Sure, I can.
Just so that they can, they can let their voice be heard too, and then you can come back.
Oh, I don't know.
Hey, Linda Pruitt, I am now your secretary on the Board of Directors. To your point about what is our plan, we've proven that we have a plan and options for Lock Buoy by what we've done with Keansburg. I think Tammy has numbers and information that can speak to that. And Leonard has been trying to explain to you that we do and can put together a library for them with, and I'm all about data. So I want data as well. So surveys, how about the mobile unit? They can walk to that, do they? So we do need some more data. We do have a plan that we can bring to Lock Buoy, same as they put together for Keansburg. Wilbur and Leonard have done a wonderful job of putting together the plan with Keansburg. Tammy and the team have put together Keansburg. There's your flagship, you know, example. Why won't my Lock Buoy work in that direction with us?
I think they will.
Okay.
But they want to know that there's someone on the other side. And.
We're here.
Okay, because that's part of the discussion is they, I mean, I think they are willing to contribute. I think Hudson, the town council, feels caught in the middle of this because you are under our umbrella as the Hudson Public Library, even though it's got a much larger service area. And so we want to facilitate the discussions with Lock Buoy to see if the Hudson Public Library can meet their needs. That's the goal.
So when somebody says, meet my needs, I'm a little on the IT side, so I call those requirements. That would be a wonderful thing for us to get from Lock Buoy. Do we have those documented from Lock Buoy?
I think we want to facilitate the conversation. I had multiple conversations with Terry Redden about having the library board put together essentially a comprehensive plan for the future because frankly, it makes us all look bad when there's this $12 million fund balance.
Whoa, and I agree with Leonard. Just because right now that bucket is big, we have to be very careful because we've all been, or I think the majority of us have lived here for 20 plus all your lives and then some. Weld County has gone through the ups and the downs. And when that down comes and we're trying to support all these libraries, we better be careful.
And that's why we had suggested a comprehensive plan document that had things like projections on revenue in and revenue out over time, not just, and planning for the future.
Okay. We can do that, we did that for, we did that for Keansburg? Okay. Okay.
I mean, but it's not just for Lock Buoy, I think that's the point. It should be for Hudson, Keansburg, the entire.
District.
Boundaries of the district, a planning document that all of the three communities, the people in the unincorporated area, everyone can see, this is what the district or the Hudson Public Library is doing today. This is its plan for the future.
Okay, okay.
But it's not been done yet.
And that's my knowledge.
Okay, because I mean, these were conversations I think we'd been having with the, with Terry for years.
Okay.
And the fact that nothing's been done is concerning.
And I think if you get a chance to put that together, I think that would go a long way in helping you in discussions with Lock Buoy. So that, I think that would be a big help. Was there anything else you needed, wanted to address, or?
No, I think if we can do that, and I think Barb will bring up some of the other.
This money that, well, thank you, Leonard. I keep hearing about all this money we have. We've done our own analysis based on tax revenue. It's probably important to point out that 90% of that money comes from the unincorporated area of RE3J. They're not walking to a library out there. We have in place, and Tammy's been so wonderful about this, outreach programs to go to areas where they're really giving us their tax revenue, and we're trying desperately to make sure we reach out to them. I will also reiterate that I have been to a couple of those meetings in Lock Buoy where they promised us, you will have a building. We even had conversations about, will they hold the number of books that we need them to hold? And they say, oh yeah, we've got it for you. And then they never gave us the building. And add to that our frustration that we're, we go to all kinds of areas in the unincorporated area, and people just love to see the library show up. In Lock Buoy, they will not even advertise that the bookmobile is coming to visit. That's the kind of cooperation we're getting from them, and we have been getting from them. Corey, you've seen some of that. It's really frustrating for us.
Thank you, and I understand the frustration. I think if you can get that report together, especially your long-term budgeting, that will help. That will help us as well. We'll continue to try to have these conversations with Lock Buoy. And you know, Corey's right, you are under the town's umbrella, but we have no control over your money. But everybody from outside doesn't see that. So we need to show in good faith that we are trying to work towards doing something. And by talking to you, that's what we're doing. And we want to help you in any way we can.
And I think the town council doesn't want you to be surprised when we are negotiating with, at Lock Buoy, to have the two-party agreement you saw between Hudson and Keansburg that never got executed because we didn't know what was going to happen with Lock Buoy. We are going to reach out with Lock, to Lock Buoy and try to have a three-party IGA that identifies proportionate representation on the board, may involve changing the name of the Hudson Public Library. And so those conversations are going to happen. And I know that we'd had this conversation at one of your board meetings a couple of years ago, and then I had a conversation about a year later with Barb where she was surprised about some of these conversations. And so it was clear to me the message didn't get to you all. And so we wanted to make sure the message was getting to you all, that those conversations are going to start up again.
And we want to make sure you're involved and know what's going on. Go ahead, Leonard. Sorry.
One of the things that I have a problem with dealing with here is, like Corey said, we've been dealing with Lock Buoy for the last probably two or three years. And I had talked to them prior to that, before we got lawyers involved. Now, I don't understand exactly how the town of Hudson governs the library because it's kind of a convoluted deal, and it seems to be the only agreement like that in the state of Colorado, if not the United States. Library law is a different kind of law than anybody else has.
Absolutely.
Now, I think our IGA with town of Keansburg is really a good agreement. I would sign the same agreement, or I wouldn't really sign, it would be you guys sign, the agreement with town of Lock Buoy, such as Keansburg. And if in the future money dries up and we have to shut down some of the branch libraries, that's what would have to happen. But what I'm taking away from this conversation is, and I don't want to pick on Corey, but I will.
Everybody.
Is if the town of Hudson's board would mandate to the library, say, we want you to take $5 million of your budget money that you have in your account and spend it in Lock Buoy. I don't know if you could do that legally. Second of all, if we want to change the laws and the agreements that were signed, why don't we have a special election on that? And see if the public wants to change that. And then, as alluded to by Barb, is a couple of years ago, we did a study, and like she said, town of Lock Buoy, it doesn't really have any commercial tax base. So they really aren't generating any money for the library in the mill levy deal that is going, as is Keansburg. They don't generate enough money. Hudson doesn't generate enough money in itself. It's all the unincorporated areas that we're getting our money from. I know that Corey said a guy in Lock Buoy, a kid in Lock Buoy couldn't walk to this library, and he's right. Kid in Prospect Valley can't walk to this library. Kid in Rogan, they can't go to this one. But what we've done in our service areas is that we basically have put it out there to the common people, or whatever, is that if they want a book and they're in firm and they can't get out of their house, they call us, we'll deliver the book to them. We'll do that for anybody in our service area. If they need help on a computer, I wouldn't doubt that we'd send somebody with a computer to their house. We've tried that. We've done the computers in Lock Buoy, lasted less than a year. And they couldn't get along with the senior center, is where we put the computers. They built their town hall. We said we would put a computer center in their town hall. They turned it down, they said it would be inconvenient. Okay. I don't know what else we could do. But I'm totally against giving money to people because they think they deserve. That's all I'm saying.
And we're not saying that either. Right now, we're just saying, keep an open mind, keep the conversations going, get the report done, and we can use that as well. And let's go forward and see if we can't work out something that's amicable for both, actually all three.
I think it was two years, maybe three years ago, we actually did a survey at Lock Buoy, sent out a survey form to everybody that had an address, and we got overwhelmingly positive response that yes, they would like a library and they would utilize the library, which is all we wanted to do. We passed that on to the board members there in Lock Buoy. Of course, there, they're not like Hudson, is you don't have a continuity of people on the board. They seem to change a lot, and you have different opinions of it. Yes, I'm not saying we're not going to work with them, I'm just saying, just because we have a good budget now, doesn't mean we want all our relatives coming to the house for a handout.
No, but that's all they see is the budget. So if we can see the report and you can show them the report, that would help. So that's, you know.
I would like.
Going forward, let's deal with that.
Okay.
Let's keep the conversations going. That's a good start as well.
I would like.
We appreciate you guys coming in. Sorry, but we do appreciate you guys coming in and talking to us and trying to work some of this out. I realize this is not going to be an overnight thing. This is something that's been going on for a long time, and it's probably going to take a long time to get settled. But we do appreciate everybody coming down tonight and at least being willing to talk about this with us.
Sure, I agree.
And I don't know how the conversations will go with Lock Buoy, but we, we're going to keep an open mind and we're going to keep talking to them.
I agree, and then with them insinuating that they would go the legal route if they don't get satisfaction is, and that would be a question for Corey is, how could they when the, the documents already have established the procedures to do what they want to do?
The way I would answer it is that the library law you are looking at doesn't all apply to the Hudson Public Library because a lot, the relationship that the Hudson Public Library has with High Plains Library District predates the library law. So we are, in many respects, a different kind of library than what is contemplated in the library law based on some of the intergovernmental agreements. And so Hudson is a member. Lock Buoy is within Hudson's service area.
Yes.
But if we have, it is subjective at some level whether or not the services are being provided to the residents of Lock Buoy in a way that is consistent with the library law. That is an argument. I understand your point. I agree with you that you're providing services to Lock Buoy. But when you have a population center in Lock Buoy, not a mill levy revenue generating center, and I get that because the mill levy generated from residences is going to be much less. It is an issue that is, has a lot of room for dispute. And if there is a way to resolve this where Lock Buoy gets a library, I think that is a goal. They have made it abundantly clear they want a library. And what we're trying to do, as I said, is facilitate those conversations.
And if I could point out, I know I've made this comment before, is that Keansburg actually got with us and worked out, or they resolved the issue, and I believe it's going to make everyone happy. And I don't want to point fingers, but Lock Buoy sure could do the same thing.
And that's what we're, we're hoping to get to, so thank you.
I appreciate your time, and all I can say is that Hudson has been doing very well. They're growing, everything, people are getting along.
For the most part.
Well, I don't know a family that gets around all the time. Okay, thank you for your time. And if you have any requests of us, like the study or anything we could do, we'll do the best we can.
We will definitely let you know. Thank you, Leonard.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
I just want to, I'm Tammy, the director of the library. And I just want to end on a positive note. We have, we are providing services for Lock Buoy. Are we providing what they want? Not inside a brick and mortar building, no, we're not. Do we take everything that we have, or portions of everything that we have at the library out to Lock Buoy? Yes, we do. We did just spend money on a building to house the bookmobile to be able to better provide for that outreach. We go to Rogan, we go to Lock Buoy, we go to, to Keansburg, we go to the high school or the middle school. So yes, there is services being provided. As the warmer weather gets here and the pandemic is over, because we were just up and running when the pandemic hit initially with the bookmobile. We intend to be out many more places and providing not only books and all the stuff that's on the bookmobile, but services as far as programming, talking about taking yoga on the road and a lot of different things. So I just want to say, yes, we have every intention of providing for the entire RE3J community and including Lock Buoy. And right now, we're doing that through the bookmobile, and we will see where the future takes us. We will definitely put together a plan, and that way everybody can kind of see where we're, what we're looking for. I'm only two months into this job, so I know that I've got a lot of work to do. And, but I did want to just say, we, we really are, our goal is to provide for this community in as many ways as we can. And it may not look exactly like what everybody would like it to look like, but we are going to do our best to provide for this community. So I just want you guys to know that. I would like to say that when communication is done with Lock Buoy, I would like to be included. I was not in the last Zoom meeting, wasn't invited. I would really like to say that I would like to be included in that. I think that if we're talking about what we're doing with Hudson Library and everything that we're doing, I need to be part of the conversation.
And I want you to know, I don't think anybody here on this council doesn't agree that you aren't providing a service. At this point, it's a member of, a matter of perspective, and it's not from our perspective, it's from Lock Buoy's. So that's what we're trying to get at.
Sure.
And we're trying to get a happy medium there. So again, we appreciate you guys coming in. We appreciate putting together the report so that hopefully we can get further with Lock Buoy, and we'll get this thing straightened out. It's not going to happen overnight, like I said, but we will get this straightened out.
Sounds great.
Thank you, and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Talking with us.
Wilbur Waifel, Hudson Library Board Member. I'd like to ask a question. What has Lock Buoy proposed as far as an intergovern- intergovernmental agreement? Have they proposed anything?
No.
And why haven't they proposed something?
I think frankly, they were waiting till after this meeting because they wanted to, again, we're trying to facilitate the conversation. Their first, a year ago, they thought they wanted to go be a branch of High Plains. I think they realized financially that wasn't going to work because there wasn't enough money combined between Lock Buoy and High Plains to make that happen. So they came back, and we had a conversation that they invited people to, and I apologize, Tammy, because I, I would prefer not to be invited to those frankly, but, but I was there and you weren't, and I understand that's a problem. But they wanted, we wanted to have this conversation with you all also, and then I think they're going to, they're going to propose something. I don't know what it is. But they're going to propose something.
I think, in my perception of this, they see this amount of money, and they think, oh, we need a building. Can they justify a building at this time? I don't think they have even tried to justify it yet.
Well, and I think that's why we need that report. You're right, they see the, the budget, or they see what you've got, and they don't understand why you can't give them a building. So let's, let's go with the report.
Or contribute just.
Or contribute, yeah.
It's not necessarily all or nothing.
Let's go with the report. Once that's done, that'll, that'll get us one step closer.
Well, I will say this, Keansburg would probably love to see how it goes, expand it as it's needed. And I think Lock Buoy needs to look at that, and that's what I'm suggesting that you present to them. Get started, see how it goes, see what their, their needs are, and how much they need to expand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we check the chat real quick? Because I know Wednesday, nobody could hear us, that was on Zoom.
He sent out a message.
Okay. Okay, cool, I just want to make sure, because I know Wednesday, nobody heard us with our mics, so.
Yeah, he did send out a message.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. All right, item number three, presentation of the PEL and ACP. Who do we have to?
Thank you. Jeffrey, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. So we have some representatives from CDOT. A little while ago, town of Hudson joined the Highway 52 Coalition. During that time, town agreed to pay $28,000 to participate in the Planning and Environmental Linkages and Access Control Plan Study. This, you, during that time, you've had representatives from Hudson attending these meetings. They happen monthly on Thursdays, their Thursday. It's usually the mayor and I. And as this process has been going, the technical team doing this report that's going to give the presentation to us, we've had our traffic consultant participate so that we have technical representation on this. So I'm going to turn it over to the presentation, and I'm going to follow along here. You should have a hard copy of the presentation, and we will be posting it. So I will turn it over to Jeff.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jeffrey Range, I'm part of the project team. For, as, as Guy had said, the Colorado 52 PEL or Planning and Environmental Linkages Study. And I'm going to turn this over to the, the consultant project manager here in a moment. But I did just want to let you know, you know, what we're hoping to do. Based on time, you know, our plan was to really give you a pretty high-level overview of this and, and try to keep time for questions and answers so we can really be able to spend more of our time on what's important to you all. You will see that this, this, the, the slide deck that we're seeing now, and you have hard copies of, actually, it's quite a few slides. And so our intention there was just to give you a little bit more. If you have interest, you can, you can look at some of those other slides, but we won't be going through each one of them now. And then just to kind of let you know, what we are hoping to accomplish with today's meeting is, on one hand, we want you all to be familiar. We want to update you on what a PEL is, what this PEL in particular is doing, the status of it, the timeline and the outcomes. So give you those high-level, big pieces of this particular study, as well as learn from you all what's important to Hudson. So we want to know what's your interests, what your concerns are. That's, that was our general set of objectives for, for today's meeting. So if there's no questions, I can turn it over to Kelly, and I might just ask, would you like us to do a round of introductions for who's on the, the team joining this call?
Please.
Okay, I'll, I'll just start, my name is Jeffrey Range, and, and I'm helping with communication and engagement. And I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Hi there, good evening, I'm Kelly Marana. I am the project manager working with CDOT, and I am with Mueller Engineering. And we do have CDOT with us, so I'll let Ally go next.
We can barely hear you.
Okay.
I'm Ally Mattson, I'm, as Kelly said, with CDOT. I'm the Region Four Assistant Access Manager, and I'm working with Gloria on the ACP portion.
And I'm Gloria Highsider, I work for Roxall Consulting.
I work for Roxall Consulting and my specialty is the access control plan.
And I'm Tina Brazil. I'm with Mueller Engineering. I'm an environmental planner, uh, working with Kelly on the project.
And Shay.
Yeah, my name is Shay. Um, I'm also with Mueller and working with, uh, Kelly and Tina.
Wonderful. I think that's it for the project team. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Why don't we advance a couple, uh, at least one slide to the agenda here? Kelly, you can let them know if you want to talk on that at all and I'll let you take it, take it over.
Okay, can everyone hear me better? Still quiet?
A little quiet.
Little quiet, okay. I'm going to talk loud then. Okay, yeah, so we have a very full agenda and please, um, interrupt or ask questions as we go because we are going to go fast. So, um, we want to get a lot in, give you a good background on not only, um, the project and the history kind of of the project, but also, um, what a P E L is and what an access control plan is. So we'll start there, then we'll dive a little bit into the, the project, where we're at. We'll talk about some of the communication that we've had on this project to date and then we'll wrap up with the access control plan. And you, you heard that we have our experts on, so they are happy to answer questions as well. So as we jump right in, um, we're going to look at some of the, um, you move to the next slide, the background on what basically is a P E L and an access control plan. So the access control plan, um, is just a piece of the puzzle and it helps regulate, um, traffic along State Highway 52. It's a good tool for communities to work with CDOT, um, and, and be able to look at future development. It will identify potential future right of way needs. Um, we're going to add that to it, um, when, when you see the final. It encourages mobility and safety when considering the future development and it provides guidance and a reference for, um, land developers. So really, it not only allows local agencies to communicate with CDOT, but also, um, with developers as they're coming in with their plans. And the most important thing to keep in mind is if nothing changes, nothing changes. So we're not looking at immediate changes, but we're looking at, um, if, if a development comes in, what are the things that need to be changed then? Um, and then the second piece of it is the P E L. And so that's, um, kind of the study we've been focusing on early and we'll talk about what that looks like, but, um, and we've gone through these steps to be able to go through the planning process, um, developing a vision, establishing the existing conditions for the corridor. We defined a purpose and need. Right now, we're in the process of developing alternatives, um, and evaluating them. And that will lead us to recommended projects. What's, what are some of the highest needs in the corridor? What are early out projects? What are things that we can check off the list? Um, and what, and what should we expect out of a P E L? It, like I said, you will have a vision for the corridor. Um, all the stakeholders got together and said, what do we really want from this quarter? What do we think it's going to be in 30 years? An understanding of the existing conditions, and that's really important as we start to look at implementing projects, we know what's out there. Right away preservation, knowing where that line is so future improvements can, um, be more quickly advanced. Support and input from the public and, and like I said, we'll talk a lot about, um, how we've engaged with the public to date. Potential improvements or stakeholder input, this is really important and this really is, is leading, um, stakeholders, our local agencies, um, to be able to join in with CDOT on some of these projects or if you want, take them on yourself. So knowing what these, these potential improvements are and then laying that foundation. So everyone knows, um, what's next or what's a project that can be done along the corridor. And so this, um, slide is kind of a newer slide for us. They're really showing, um, how these processes work together. Uh, the P E L is separate from the access control plan, but there's a lot of information that is shared between them. Um, and then when we get to the end of, of the, I guess, the study for the P E L and access control plan and putting that together, the results are different. So for the P E L, we asked for a stakeholder letter of support and for the access control plan, it's an I G A, which is actually a signed, um, signed document by, um, your council. So, um, your commissioner will, um, or your council will sign on behalf and that will be a binding document for the city. So we're going to jump into where we are, um, with the project to date. So the, um, State Highway 52 Planning and Environmental Linkage Study, um, started in March of last year. The limits are from State Highway 119 to State Highway 79. So we have a really long 42 mile corridor we're looking at. And we've been really involved with all of our stakeholders, including you, um, but also Boulder and Weld Counties, um, Erie, Frederick de Cono, Fort Lepton and Keansburg. So, um, we have really gotten to know these communities and enjoy, um, presenting to all of you and answering questions. And then we are on schedule for this project. You can see in orange there, early on, we did, um, shift some of the data collection due to COVID. Um, we, we knew we had to wait until traffic volumes, um, started to return to normal. So we, we let that slide in the schedule, but since then we have been on schedule and are, and are anticipated to, uh, be done by November of this year. So as we started in on the P E L study in March, um, we worked with our stakeholders to go through the process of developing a reason. So why are we doing this study? What is the vision for the corridor? What do we, what do we see it as in, in 20 years, 30 years, 40 years? Um, and then we went through collecting existing conditions and that helped us really develop the needs for the corridor. Um, we, we knew where safety problems were, congestion was, um, and really understanding some of the environmental constraints along the corridor. So we are able to develop the purpose and need and then the goals for the corridor. And, and both of these are, are driving factors in, in how we select projects to be able to answer, um, the needs along the corridor. And so, um, the existing conditions report was completed in August of 2020. You can find it on CDOT's website. It is complete. Um, and so if you have any questions, want to look at it, we would love for you to take a look. Uh, but everything you want to know about the corridor is in there, um, traffic, safety, um, environmental, um, and a lot of other planning documents that we referenced throughout the process. So from the existing conditions, um, and developing the purpose and need, we are able to develop the, and the evaluation criteria. And as we go through, level one is based on the purpose and need. What are the needs of the corridor? So all the alternatives have to meet the purpose and need of the project. And as we refine further down, then they start to meet the goals. And a lot of the time it's community goals, environmental goals, um, and their non-transportation related goals, um, so that we can incorporate, um, all the needs along the corridor. And that's kind of where we're looking at this. So right now we're just finishing up the level one evaluation criteria. And like I said, that's based on the purpose and need. Um, we're starting to move into the level two, um, and that gets us into a lot more detail for these alternatives, um, and looking more at intersection specific alternatives. And then the result of all this, of looking at all of these different alternatives will be what will our potential recommendations be for the corridor? What projects are really at the top? Where do we really see that a project could answer needs in the corridor? And, and most importantly, really looking at the corridor as a whole. So like I said, we have 42 miles that we're looking at. Um, one of our goals is mobility. So how do we make sure that all of these projects and, and we connect 52 from one end to the other, um, to, to meet the needs, um, of the entire, entire corridor? On the communication side, um, we have a fairly robust, um, program, I guess I'll say, of, of how we communicate with our, our project team and then how we communicate with CDOT. So we have a project management team that meets monthly. Um, and we talk about issues, what's going on? Are we on schedule? What's, what's new in the corridor? And then from there, our, um, we are able to update the State Highway 52 Coalition. Um, and that's what Guy was mentioning. They meet on Thursday, the, the fourth Thursday of the month. So we able, we're able to provide a, uh, update during that time. We also meet with the technical team once a month. Um, and this is a representation of all the local agency staff, um, getting their input, keeping them involved in the public or in the project. And then we have public outreach. And so being able to connect with the public, which means not only stakeholders that live along the corridor, but also those that use the corridor. And that's where we get a lot of our information about where there are problems, um, and what needs to be addressed. Yep. And then on that slide there, it tells you how often we meet. So with the coalition, we have six presentations. Um, we've had three of them to date. Um, as I mentioned with the technical team, we've, we have monthly meetings and then we've had, um, one-on-one stakeholder meetings with all of our, um, local agencies. That was not only at the beginning of the project to figure out, figure out what were your concerns, um, what do you want to see in this study, but also meeting with them for the access control plan. So we had a whole separate set of meetings for that. And then on the public outreach side, um, lots of virtual public engagement, which is, have been way more successful than we ever thought it would be, which is, um, encouraging, I'll say, um, knowing that we're still reaching the public. We have quarterly email and newsletters that go out. And this also has been translated into Spanish. So we have a lot of, a large Spanish speaking population. Um, and so that information is available as well. And you can see on here, we have these flyers that are available to you and anyone that needs them to basically give, the one on the left is a one pager, what you need to know about the project, high level. And the one, one on the right talks more about FAQs about the access control plan process. And I mentioned our virtual public engagement, um, event that we had. It was from August to September. We had 808 unique site visits, which is really amazing, um, in, in being able to get people involved in this project. People are able to leave comments, um, and we address all of those comments and, and we're able to respond. We also had a, a map where people could pick certain locations and tell us what was going on at those locations. Um, and people also had the opportunity to sign up. We had 126 new contacts added to our D B. So, um, those people now are receiving our quarterly newsletter. So they're getting regular updates. Our next, um, kind of outreach is to start looking at some specific organizations along the corridor where they might have a network that could distribute information. Some of these like CMA, CMCA, which is Colorado Motor Car, Carriers Association, um, we've met with before, but we like to keep them updated, same with the railroad. We've reached out to the school district just to see if they have any plans. And so if you have, um, groups, HOAs that would benefit from receiving this information, we would love to add it to the list. And you can see, this is our, um, contact us, where you can find us. CDOT's web, website is up to date, um, and Jeffrey does an amazing job of keeping that up to date. We also have an email address where people can find us, um, or even calling the hotline, which does get used. So we have made some good friends on that. And then if you'd like to be on the email list, um, you'll receive the, um, e-newsletter and then be updated on our virtual public event coming up in August of this year. And I'll jump into the access control plan. We kind of started off with that one, talking about the importance and the benefits of it. Our access control plan, going for the 42 miles, has identified over 500 access points. I think we're closer to 600, but Gloria could probably tell me. And 80% of them are in within Weld County, which is to be expected. And the neat part about this access control plan is it, it identifies each of the access points by the tenth of the mile. So some access control plans just label them from one end to the next and it's hard to know where you are. So really trying to make this a useful tool, um, for, for the city. So you have something to go back to and can easily identify it and be able to work with CDOT in implementing, um, this plan. And, um, going forward, you can see all the meetings that we completed. I talked about those a little bit, um, in understanding access, um, for each of these communities. So we've completed all of the first round of meetings, um, to talk about access. We are currently updating the maps. Um, and so our next plan is to have the draft update, draft maps, um, and the I G As delivered to each or sent out to each of the, um, agencies for review. And so this gives you a time to start looking at the I G As, um, looking at the language that's in there and then at the coalition meetings, bringing those changes. Because all of the I G As will have the same changes. So we have one I G A that we're working off of for, um, this ACP. So that is the next step. Those will go out, um, before May 1st. I'm hoping middle of April, but, um, before May 1st for sure. So, um, you can start reviewing those. And then, yeah, as I mentioned, um, the project team is finishing level one, working on level two evaluation, uh, matrix, um, looking at specific, um, intersection alternatives. We're sitting down with some of, um, the local agencies if they want to talk about, um, an intersection of importance, um, doing that now and then continuing our public engagement effort, um, really making sure that the word is out there about the project and then, um, so people know how to contact us, where to receive information and then most importantly, looking forward to, um, another virtual public engagement opportunity in August. And that was as fast as I think I've gone, talking about the project, but would love to answer any questions.
I have one question. This is Guy. This I G A, if I'm understanding this correctly, some of the signatories to this will be the Weld County Commissioners and the Boulder County Commissioners. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And how is that shaping out?
It, as you know, it was a little rocky, um, in our, our, one of our last meetings. Since then, they've actually, the commissioners have gotten together and, um, have really started to work through what, not only alternatives, I think the alternatives are the biggest or the bigger, um, point of contention right now, um, for the project. For the, the access control plan, um, it's actually going great. They are in support of it. They know that it's there to maintain and improve safety along the corridor. So, um, I don't see any issue at all with the access control plan, um, and them signing the I G A, um, from either county. And Ally, I don't know if you have any more on that.
No, I, I'm on the same page. Kelly summed it up well. I think it's more so like she mentioned having to do with alternatives, um, in terms of what the PEL is going to study and, and presents in the PEL.
Well, I wasn't accurate when I told everybody in Hudson they have to buy a bicycle and some soy milk.
No.
I bet.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you for presenting to us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for having us.
If I get, I will forward them to you at our meeting.
Okay, that would be great. We'd be happy to answer them. Thanks so much.
I'm assuming the only ones that are on the Zoom are the, um, yeah, okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
For a discussion, future of Hudson Water.
Thank you. Uh, you wanted us to put back on the agenda. It is here. As you know, we've asked three questions. You've had some, um, I think you all received a couple of emails from a couple of developers. I don't know if they had an opportunity to talk to citizens, any other people. We did include a report on some general water conservation landscaping policies. You'll see it's for Colorado Springs, Fort Collins and Greeley. The reason we chose those three towns to look at is they're the only ones that kind of encompassed all of the things that you would look at. It was very hard to compare other small towns because they would take a little piece here or a little piece there. We kind of wanted to give you examples of a lot of things that you could consider if that's the road you wanted to go down to. If Jen's here, she's authored that, she can answer any questions on that. Is there anything else that you might need from staff to help you get to a decision? I know I asked this question two weeks ago, but we, we want to give you the, the time and the space to get all the information you need, but just squeeze out some answers.
All of the citizens that I have heard from have said absolutely do not blend water.
Same that I've heard from.
And those that I have heard from have also said they don't want to see discounts in water based on low usage because it could change later down the line and the homeowner or whoever could change it later down the line and we'd have no recourse in that. So that was what I got back. Daniel, did you get anything different?
Not as far as those two items, no. I heard the same thing. Basically, don't mix the water. It was kind of mixed on providing discounts for people that don't use as much water. I think what you're referring to is having stuff installed in the home.
Yes.
So some of the people that reached out to me said, you know, if we had a tiered water rate, which we already do, we just weren't aware of that.
Okay. Candace?
Same.
Joe? Same?
Yeah.
Michael? So it sounds like, no, we're not going to blend, and it's not worth looking into any more options for discounting. And just to be clear, it's not discounting water to the residents. It's discounting water to developers and buildings buying in the first time. So, and that was basically a no. What was the third thing?
Timing of when you would require dedication. Currently, the town requires dedication, water annexation, is council open to recalibrate when water is due later in the development process, for example, at final plat?
I have only heard from developers on that one. Has anybody else heard anything different?
Most of the people I talked to said final plat, but that's because they want stuff like rec centers and road facilities. They see development happening faster that way. So.
Yeah, and that's what I heard too. I think if we went to final plat, development would happen faster. I think it.
We'd at least get more interest in it.
I don't think it would develop faster.
Yeah, they still have to come up with the money or the water.
More interest.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. More and more interest, and that is a possibility. They still have to provide water before they, like I said, the final plat. So we're not going to lose out in any way, shape or form other than like when Hudson Hills came in. They came in fifteen years ago, Corey, initially, or was it twenty? Two thousand? So C twenty-one years ago. It sat there for a long time, but they had to bring water. I could walk. If they didn't have to bring the water until final plat, not that we used the water, but they they brought that. That's the only kind of difference. Same with the if Pioneer would have come through, they'd have had to come in the water or bring in the water right away, not at final plat. Not that we liked their water that they were bringing in, but those are the differences. I have no problem with final plat. What do you guys want?
I agree.
I don't have a problem with final plat either.
I think I prefer final plat.
That's the majority. So final plat it is. No blending, no providing discounts for low water usage systems in the building and final plat is okay.
All right. I appreciate that. We can bring back some language to you, at least on the the timing issue.
Okay.
But the others, we wouldn't have to change because that's where you're at right now. So no blending, it's mountain water CBT. No to codifying some of the things. Water saving concepts, and we will bring you legislation to move to final plat.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it because that's a that's a linchpin discussion, as you saw some from some of the developer comments you got. So.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Four B, discussion pandemic relief. Absolutely.
Do we have a plan in place to actually purchase water if it comes available? Like, what's that look like right now?
So what we're doing is we paid and we got a grant to do that study, the conservation study. That's a requirement in the state of Colorado if you're going to take a loan from the revolving loan fund to pay for water. So we're going to get that done. We budgeted to put a hundred thousand dollars aside in the water account for water acquisition. And then once that report's done, then we're going to go looking to try to put all those pieces together to see if we can find water from
rifle gap.
Wind gap, I'm sorry. I was calling the same wind gap, because that's the water you can use to perpetuate.
What's the?
And that's going to be expensive, like a million bucks.
Do we have any idea when that's what study will be done?
We are looking third quarter of this year, I think, or early, early fourth quarter. Which is what we kind of envisioned it. So we'd have the fourth quarter to start looking at this stuff. We were talking to, but we talked last year budget. This year, we put a hundred thousand dollars aside and we are paying for that study.
And didn't we agree we're going to put about the same amount aside each year?
We would like to.
Building up.
Yep.
Funds for water.
Yep. So when nothing's available, you're building up with something's there. You're using that as a down payment to mitigate the amount of loan that you're
Right.
Taking. But to acquire this water, you're going to need
Big bucks.
To save up for a long timer. Get the loan.
Yeah. Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
So that, so answering the questions we posed to you. We started out two years ago really talking about water in Hudson. And we talked about it in real long-term sense and kind of a shorter developer sense. And so I think from my point of view, now I've got all the feedback that I've needed from council to kind of come up with a policy that deal with both those parts. I think we're there.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Four B, discussion pandemic relief policy extension.
Thank you. We you do have a pandemic policy that lapses at the end of this month. Wanted to know if you want to continue that. There are a couple issues. I did not bring a draft of a new concept to you guys. Reason being, the reason we extended this last time is there was government in action in November and December. Tamping businesses back down. And so we thought people might be affected by that. So you extended this policy. There's been no such trigger since that time. So I'm not quite sure what we'd be reacting to. We've already helped people one of the the two prior three power policies that you've had at various times. So I think it's a discussion of, do you want to continue this? And if so, what are we doing and what are we helping? What problem are we solving? I will say that there is, it's starting to waylaying these fees and everything is starting to show up on the books. It's we're getting into six figures of what's owed us.
I'm going to say don't continue it because everything is opening back up. You know, people are getting their vaccines. Everyone's able to work now. So I don't think we need to continue it.
I agree.
Same here.
Would there be a way to create something, say, if somebody caught COVID and had a bad case or a family member and they couldn't work because of that?
Um.
Are you talking going forward then?
Yeah. So like if somebody gets a really bad case from COVID specifically, and then they can't work.
I think their job pays them if they have COVID and they can't work. So I don't think it's a problem.
They're required to give them so many hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if a family member, you have FMLA that would cover that if it's a family member. So.
And I don't know that that's any different, like for the family leave. I don't know if that's any different than somebody being in a car accident or cancer or.
Yeah.
You know, that's not very nice, but it's kind of the truth of it.
Yeah. It's just that it's one of the sticky things with shutting off water when that's the case, like you said, with a lot of different things, but.
Yeah.
I do. I do agree the way that it is written right now. I don't think there's a need to extend.
Did we save anybody from shutting their water off with us anyway?
Like two people.
Okay, yeah. So that, yeah. Don't extend it.
Because by that time in December, only a few people are getting laid back off again.
Yeah, because, yeah, so, okay.
Okay, so staff directions to.
Not extended.
Okay, appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
All right. Four C, resolution twenty-one dash twelve, resolution approving event services contracts with Colorado Event Productions for the town's outdoor movie series.
Thank you. The events committee planned to do outdoor movies. So this is a production company that produces or brings the screens, the projector, the sound, so on and so forth. This is budgeted, and these contracts have been reviewed and approved by your town legal counsel, and it's for three nights over the summer.
Does anybody have any questions? No, then I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution twelve dash or twenty-one dash twelve, resolution approving event service contracts with Colorado Event Productions for the town's outdoor movie series.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stadler?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammack?
Yes.
Councilmember Mastis?
Yes.
Councilmember Knoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Harges?
Yes. Four D, ordinance twenty-one dash oh three and ordinance amending chapter seven, article one of the Hudson Municipal Code relating to residential trash trash service, second reading.
Thank you. This was introduced at the last meeting. On first reading, it was read and there was no amendments. There are no offered amendments by staff this time. And this is on second reading.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve on second reading ordinance number twenty-one dash zero three and ordinance amending chapter seven, article one of the Hudson Municipal Code relating to residential trash service.
Okay.
It's been moved in second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Staff report, Sky.
Thank you. I have one larger thing to update the council on. I made a decision at the staff level to end one position, and I'm going to create two part-time positions. So I'm ending the assistant to the town manager position, and I'll be creating two part-time positions. The first part-time position will be a front office tech that will concentrate on payroll and benefits. Our payroll and benefits have gotten more complicated since we changed insurance, the library's hiring, so on and so forth. And then the second part-time position will be a rec and events coordinator dedicated to rec and events to get that started. We've had an inordinate amount of interest in our parks for the summer, like January second, people were calling us trying to get parks. We know it's something that this council's been interested in, and so that's a decision I've been making. I did talk to Matt this afternoon about this. Matt will be with us for one more month.
So through the end of April?
I'm sorry.
Through the end of April?
Middle of April.
Okay.
So, but when we hired, we told all candidates that this was not a forever job, that it was designed to get some bigger things done, which it has done. And so I think now that has less value than doing the rec stuff and getting a little internal help. Other than that, you might have noticed it snowed a little bit. Hunter can talk a little bit about that. And that's about it. Any questions?
Corey? Uh-oh, he's got a paper.
No, no, just notes. Two things. The first is I wanted to confirm with council that the direction related to the Hudson Public Library remains unchanged. Because things are going to get
hairy.
Hairy. And so my intent is to send the IGA that we had agreed in concept with Keansburg to Lock Buoy. Over time, that whole idea of proportionate representation, I think over a longer period of time will help this discussion. But I'm going to suggest to Lock Buoy that they need to reach out to the Hudson Public Library, and I'm frankly going to try to stay somewhat out of it and see what happens first. And then if I have to get back in, get back in, but based on tonight's discussion, I just wanted to confirm the direction remained unchanged. Okay.
And just so everybody knows, when we first started having talks with Lock Buoy, I mean, they literally came in and said, we're going to have a a library of our own. They didn't want Keansburg in the discussions. They didn't want them to even be there. So that's kind of where they're coming from at the moment.
Well, and even the the meeting that Tammy was talking about, we sort of had to force them to invite Keansburg. We left it up to the Hudson Public Library to figure out. And my my impression is that Leonard didn't reach out to Tammy and tell her that there was this meeting going on. But regardless, from I I went over and asked charity, and and it sounds like the relationship with the public library in the town has gotten better. But it is really difficult to have a twelve million dollar fund balance and.
Not justify putting in another library.
Or or at least a contribution to another library. So anyway, okay. And then the second thing is is kind of an odd update. And so I will, I will refresh your memory that on November eighteenth of twenty twenty, you directed me to get the IGA from the school district on potential fee in lieu of dedication. The reason I know that is because the same night I sent an email to the attorney for the district saying, send me the agreement. I got it last week. So I'm going to take a look at it and and, you know, get back to you on on sort of the pros and cons of it. But I wanted to let you know, it it took them about five months to send the agreement. So it has not been anything on our end. It's been waiting for the school district. If you get any questions from the school district.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions for Corey? Thank you. Charity?
I want to let you guys know that Guy, Lorraine and I had a pretty positive conversation with our new auditors. We have our audits scheduled. We should not file an extension, and I'm pretty hopeful that this will probably be the most seamless audit I'll have to deal with.
Good to know. Any questions for charity? Thank you. Hunter?
I don't think it will come to any surprise that what Public Works has been doing. From, you know, early Sunday morning till Monday afternoon, we accrued about a hundred and forty man-hours of guys out plowing, working, shoveling, broke a lot of equipment. Unfortunately, we did have an accident with one of the plows. We've been very fortunate in this town. That's the first one I've seen. And actually, Lee said in his eighteen years, it's the first one we've had. So I I feel the guys did a great job with the amount of snow we have and the amount of equipment, you know, the the public workshop kind of looked like a frat house, guys sleeping on the floor, and it was a mess. But I I feel they did a really good job. And, you know, we're estimating we had about two feet of snow. It's hard to tell out here with the blowing. I had four foot just on my work truck. We finally got it dug out today. So I think next winter, we're going to park the truck somewhere else. Other than that, hopefully, once it dries out, we'll move forward with Memorial Park, getting the new flagpoles up. Everything's ready, except for a foot of snow, sitting where we want to put them. And, you know, I think we're going to be mowing and spraying weeds here real quick now. We're going to get some sunshine and everybody be ready. And just, you guys have any questions for me?
I mentioned something to Guy earlier. I don't know who needs to do it or, you know, we get together. Can we relook at drainage from the parking lot here? I realize this is a lot of snow, and it's going to put a lot of water out there, but this seems to be a problem every time we get any moisture.
Right.
Especially when we freeze again at night.
Yeah.
The water running across the handicap parking.
I'm actually been kind of hoping for some nicer weather to have our contractor take a look at that. We're looking at putting a concrete drain pan that just aligns with the curb. So whoever thought water is going to turn a corner and go uphill and around parking spots, it it just doesn't work.
No.
So we're going to look at just putting a concrete pan across there to help hopefully flow that water down and out of there.
Okay. And water pump?
Um.
Of course, now they can't get in there, right?
Right. They they got all their inspections. I believe they actually passed them on their electrical. So now I'm just waiting to hear what their next steps are. I'm waiting for the controls contractor to come in. They need to shut down our entire system for a day, which means I have to have somebody on standby to run a pump on hand to keep our elevated tanks full while they swap out everything from the nineteen fifty's controls to two thousand twenty-one. So we'll have to have somebody on standby and that's yeah, that's literally what they do. They're open the cabinet, just yanking everything out and putting a new one in there.
Twenty-one.
So it's it's going to be a big step for us.
With the new pump system, I know you have big generators out there.
Yes.
Currently with the elevated tanks, other than filling those tanks, when we lose power in town, it's not a big deal. We've still got water because it's coming from the elevated tanks, as long as that's got water.
Correct.
With the generators going, so long as nothing happens to the generators, we shouldn't have any issues with power outages and loss of water, correct?
Correct. And that's, you know.
I'm going to say. So this does happen. Two months ago, we had, we had, we didn't have any power coming to the. Two months ago, we had, we had, we didn't have any power coming to, to the prison. No problem. We had, you know, a big generator. We were out, that didn't, that failed.
Yeah.
We were without payout power for six hours. And that was, it sucked to deal with defenders.
Fortunately, we have a Cummins rep here in town who I know very well. And he has offered for emergencies if he's here to come out and help us. We check our generators weekly. Somebody goes in, opens them up, checks fluids, oils, starts them. We actually, just before the storm, found a coolant link on the one at the wastewater plant. They couldn't get the parts to us in time, so we JB welded the generator back together and it worked perfect.
Just wanted to check.
Yeah. No, that's, that's a big fear, you know, every municipality has.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Hunter?
Oh, good job.
All right. Thanks a lot, guys.
Jay is on vacation. He does not have a report.
Okay. Jen?
Okay, I might be hiding my curiosity, but I actually have something for tonight. So as you will remember, we brought before you, uh, uh, it was almost a, an update to Verdade well sites, their well pads landscaping. Since then, they have brought a plan back to the planning commission. They came back last week and they let us know that they would be planting within the month. So basically mid-March to mid-April was when they were planning on planting. Thankfully, they also knew about the storm, which is why there's no plants out there right now because it is mid-March. Um, and I found out today from Heather Mitchell, who is the representative from Verdade, that the watering will be via truck. And so they're going to truck in and out the water. And so nothing's going to be staying on the site and anything like that for water. They're actually going to have to pay a watering, a truck to come in and dump water on plants. And then it will leave and come back when it's supposed to water the plants again. Yeah. Um, a lot of park and recreations departments do that in their, their like long distant parks. I know I'm, I'm getting in the faces, like, wow, it's going to be a lot to truck in. But that's, that's what they're going to do in the meantime until there's permanent water service that goes to that, that property. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel?
Danada.
Candace?
Nothing.
Since Jason's here, I'll ask, how many permanent police officers do we have now? Do we lose a couple?
Police officers?
Permanent, yeah. I guess they all work well. We have reserves, don't we? And you're not talking in the, the mic.
Six full-time with one open position that includes the chief.
But one of those full-time positions just went to reserve, though?
Yes.
And I think Hernandez quit too, is what I heard.
Yes.
So that would be the full-time position we have open? Is Hernandez a spot or have we hired for that one?
We are in the process of hiring for that one. So in total, we'll have seven full-time police officers, three part-time detectives, one reservist, and then the community resource animal control officer.
And we haven't hired for that one yet, have we?
No, we haven't, no.
Okay.
Right, thanks. No, that's it.
That's it? Sarah?
No.
Michael?
Nothing.
I got a couple of things. Can somebody make sure that waste management realizes that after missing an entire week, they better pick up all the trash that's sitting on the side of the dumpsters or the trash cans as well?
They don't get out of the truck.
Oh, they will.
They are going to have to. I realize on a normal week, they don't pick that up because that's beyond their service, but after this week, they're going to have to pick those up.
For a lot of people.
Um, this is just a, can we see about getting some darker shades for that outside window? Yeah. No, it's the front windows. They're not dark enough.
I'm sorry. We're going to have to leave them up because I like the sunset, okay?
There we go. That'd work. Um, yeah, if we could do something. That has been an issue since this town hall was put in place, is that evening sun. Something.
Bring your sunglasses. He's just wearing them.
Yeah, I don't have any sunglasses, honestly. I really need to pick up a pair. RV living in town. Are we back to you got seven days sort of thing? Or?
For what?
RV living, people who are living in RVs in their parking lot, backyard, whatever.
Right. We, we haven't given you very much.
We have had several complaints about one's residence in specific. We have sent that information over to Jake. He is in the process of working on that.
Talking the one next to the park?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that the one that was on the, uh, Facebook page asking about it? Because there was another one that was asking, saying that they had family.
Right.
Going through a hard time and they were going to have them live in their RV on their property too. And so.
We have had those calls actually come into town hall. We addressed it. It's being worked on.
Okay.
There are absolutely several in town.
Yeah, that one's just very prominent and you see it.
Yeah, that one's very prominent. There's another one, I want to say around Third and Cedar area that is very obvious as well. Shoveling the snow out of their RV.
Yeah.
And there's probably a few that the RV is parked in the backyard.
Yeah.
And there's no.
Backyard, slides are out, hose is hooked up, electric cords, rugs outside.
Well, you're going to see that with mine pretty soon because we're getting ready to.
Right.
Get it ready and.
But it hasn't been that way for two weeks.
No.
Can you clarify, living in it is different between eating it out? It's different than managing or maintaining it? It's different than playing in it for a day? Okay, so here's the difference between.
And ours, I will say, does get used for a couple of days or a week when we have family visiting. But it's not lived in. It's a guest room while they're here. And it's not hooked up either.
We have a checklist in Public Works before we call, safe build. You know, we check for power cords, water hoses. The big one is the steps. And if they have something at the bottom of the step, because, you know, anyone who has a camper or motorhome, you always put a rug down to keep from tracking stuff in. So those are the things we look for. You know, slideettes are out. And the main one, the giveaway is always the rug.
Okay. The rug will be down so we can keep the mud out of it.
We'll be watching you then.
It's always plugged in so that the batteries stay topped off.
But do you always have a hose hooked up to it with heat trays?
We don't ever have a hose hooked up to it unless we're filling it to leave.
Right.
Uh, and the steps are down because we're going in and out to prep it for this summer.
Yeah, you just run that down the alley.
No, I haven't kicked him out yet, but I'm getting.
There's a couple houses in town that we're questioning if somebody got kicked out of their house because we're watching them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other issue, I know the last time, the last meeting, you've got one of the older. Anybody else with a Samsung having trouble with charging?